Thank you for such a great opportunity, Lord God, to be able to proclaim your name for everything that you're doing, not only in our individual lives, but in the lives of each and every individual in this city. Father, thank you for another opportunity, Father, to just proclaim who you are, Father, in this Can Do City. Father, we're thanking you for our mayor, and we thank you for all and each and every one of these council members, Lord God, and each concerned citizen that's here tonight, those that are joining us online, we thank you for them as well. Father, we know that you have some great things planned for us, but Father, more than anything else, we have to come before you and ask you for direction. So we're looking for a direction tonight, God, in the name of Jesus. Father, you said that the hands of the heart of the King is in the hands of the Lord. And Father, each and every one that's on this panel tonight, Lord God, are, they're here because of you. You've chosen them. You've given them an opportunity, Father, to ask for direction and instruction on what this city is supposed to be like in years to come, for our families, for our children, for our future. So God, we're thanking you, and we're depending on you, Father, for direction, in the name of Jesus. So God, as this meeting goes on tonight, Father, let all minds be looking toward you and not personal, not personal agendas, in the name of Jesus. We are here for the people, and these are your people. And God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity. We continue to give you praise and glory because you are so deserving, and we do it in Jesus' name. Let everyone say amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Barber, thank you so much. If you would, just tell us a little bit about yourself, your ministry. I know you're a very familiar face here in the city and the community, but let us know who you are, sir.
Absolutely. My name is Rick Barber. I was born in Philadelphia, moved down here in 1987 after getting out the military.
By Eagles Fly.
Yeah, I'm an Eagles fan. I'm an Eagles fan. So I got here in 1987 after getting out the military. I was never stationed here, came down here TDY in 1970. And so been here ever since. So my children, we raised here. One of my sons is a business owner here in Fayetteville. He owns Classic Paint and Body. I'm a retired individual from Fayetteville State University, but now I'm back there again. So it's just been a great opportunity. But as far as ministry is concerned, I'm the pastor, founder and pastor of the Restoration Place in Fayetteville. We're actually located in Savoy Heights. And so if anybody knows of a building, because we're outgrowing our building, so if you know a building that you want to bless us with, we'd be great. But really, I love Fayetteville. I really do. And after being in the Air Force, I was in the Air Force for 13 years, and I've been around, but I really, really love Fayetteville, and that's why we're still here.
Thank you so much, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your service, thank you for your work in the community as well.
Thank you.
And he was a bit modest. He does a lot of work in the, in the community with the homeless and those who are in need. So thank you for your work, sir. Counselor, at this time, we'll move to announcements and recognition. This time, we have a proclamation that I've prepared. If I could ask Mr. Baker if he can meet me at the podium?
Sir, at this time, we would like to read a proclamation. As you know, today is Indigenous People Recognition Day, and we've prepared a proclamation to present to Mr. Baker. It says, "Whereas indigenous people inhabited this country long before the colonization of the Americas began, whereas North Carolina is home to more than 122,000 American Indians and has eight historic tribes, the Coheary, Eastern Band of the Cherokee, Hallowa Saponi, Lumbee, Maharan, Okanichi, Band of Sapona, Saponi, and Wakama Siawin; and whereas the indigenous people have built vibrant and diverse cultures safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and traditions across generations; whereas the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina honors and respects the heritage and the culture of our American Indian tribes and people; and whereas we value their many contributions that they've made to technology, medicine, science, philosophy, and arts in our society and community through indigenous peoples' history, culture, knowledge, and labor; whereas the city of Fayetteville recognizes the strength and resilience of the indigenous people and the honor of the tribal nations that continue to thrive today. Now therefore, I Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, do hereby honorably proclaim October 10th in the year of 2022 to be in honor of Indigenous People Day and encourage the residents to recognize and celebrate the many indigenous communities and cultures that are part of our city and our state. Witness therefore, I have set my hand, cause the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 10th day of October 2022." So thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Baker, and all who we celebrate today. At this time, I'll move to Councilmember Benevente, who has a special announcement.
Today is also World Homeless Day. It's observed internationally on the 10th of October and was marked on the 10th of October in 2010 for the first time. Since its founding, World Homeless Day has been observed on every continent except Antarctica in several dozen countries. The purpose of World Homeless Day is to draw attention to the needs of the people who experience homelessness locally and provide opportunities for community to get involved in responding to homelessness while taking advantage of the stage on International Day, which provides a call to end homelessness through improved policy and funding. Locally, the Community Awareness Alliance is a group in Fayetteville that has been working hard to serve those who need it most throughout the years. They recognize World Homeless Day annually with a variety of events. This year, they screened a documentary project by Donna Marlowe known as "I Am Somebody: Faces of Homelessness." So on behalf of City Council, I want to thank Dr. Val, Brother Willie, and all the compassionate members of the Community Awareness Alliance for their commitment to those who need it most in our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll go to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take the time to inform our citizens of the bond education session. This is an education session that will be facilitated by our staff to educate and answer the questions that's pertaining to the three bonds that will be on the November ballot, and it relates to public safety, affordable housing, and infrastructure. So make sure you mark your calendars. It is for Wednesday, October 12th, from 5:45 at Lake Room Recreation. And then also, while we're speaking of recreation centers, if you have any young children and teens, we are having a movie night, a theme movie night, this Thursday at EE Miller from 6:00 to 7:30. And also, we have Carve and Create Pumpkins, and those, the fee is $2, and that will, you'll be able to have a, well, you will be provided a pumpkin. So if you're in an area and want something to do for your children, make sure you come out. Again, that's on this Thursday at EE Miller from 6:00 to 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. At this time, we'll move to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Hewitt? All right, moving right along, Council, item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. If we could have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Benevente to approve, seconded by Councilmember Hare. And Council, because of the iPad connectivity, we'll be asking for votes by hand. So any discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor of agenda approval, show of hands. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Item 7.0 is the consent agenda. Council, any items to consent? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve consent. All right. All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion to approve consent? All right, Council, those in favor of approval? All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. At this time, we'll move to item 8.0, Staff Report, Acceptance of the 2023 Fiscal Year First Quarter Strategic Report. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor. It's good to see y'all again. So good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, and City Councilmembers. My name is Chris Lowry, the Strategic and Performance Analytics Manager for the city, and presenting with me tonight is Mr. Andrew Brayboy, the Senior Corporate Performance Analyst for the city. It is my honor and privilege to give a brief overview and update to our council and community for the city's first quarter performance report. Looking at this city snapshot, you can see a brief highlight of some of the city's accomplishments from the FY22 year. You would notice there were about 212,000, right at 213,000 calls for E911, right at 50,000 Priority One calls for police, and right at 30,000 Fire Department calls for Council, to show the scope of the city's hard work, you will notice that there are 14 TFAs here. Looking at the action plan, there is only one TFA that is not on time, which is our opportunity zones. Moving on to Slide 8, as you'll notice here, half of these tactics are red and the other half are green. The development finance incentive policy is being reviewed by outside council, and staff will bring back to council in quarter two of FY23. The market analysis for the three opportunity zones will be discussed with council this month, in the month of October. And the last two tactics here are currently not on time. Looking at the land bank policy, funds are needed to stand up and support this program currently.
So we'll move on now to Slide 11, and you'll see here, this is TFA 2.4.1, which is Execute Redevelopment and Business Growth Plan for Merkison Road and Bragg Boulevard with the beautification of city gateways. You can see many of these tactics are green and complete based on the tactics that were developed for FY22. Also, the CNI planning is on schedule with a draft plan being reviewed by community stakeholders and partnerships. Also, the plan is being brought back to council in October. For the NC Veterans Park Phase Two item, property ownership has been finalized with the site work currently in progress. Also, the senior center east groundbreaking happened in the first quarter for FY23. And then we have the Mazarick Green Lake Connector to downtown. The contract is being developed for the feasibility study and to host the community meetings. So now in Slide 15, you have your TFA 3.1.1, which is to develop funding plans for infrastructure. This was completed and presented to council in the third quarter of FY22, and is currently operational. We'll move on now to Slide 34.
That's a large jump, but we wanted to make sure that we hit some of the changes that was in this progress report here for council. So we're going to hit some of the high-level changes that we had seen throughout this progress here.
Right, so you'll see here the three tactics. They're 100% complete, and we consider these as closed. This is the, for your, I'm sorry, we skipped a page here. So for TFA 4.5.2, you have the housing study, and this looks into completing the house study implemented and affordable housing strategy. Two of these tactics are used to measure this TFA are 100% complete based on results from FY22 and for the first quarter. So the council's top three items here are completed, which are to develop the housing resources and to engage the public land disposition and the down payment assistance. And then we have the housing trust fund policies, which are operational and currently ongoing. Here we have TFA 4.6.1, which is the Strategy for Homelessness. Within the communities and school tactics, we deployed a student support specialist for a full school year until the funding expired in FY22. Staff has also researched and presented the results of their empowerment plan model to council. And then we have the Day Resource Center bid, which was awarded, and construction is currently underway. And these three tactics here, as you can see, are 100% complete, which we consider as closed, and we'll move on now to Slide 45.
TFA 6.1.1 is dealing with maximizing the city's relationship with the military. Two of these tactics are 100% complete, with the last tactic at 60%. Work is currently underway to establish and finalize the military liaison program, and city staff is actively seeking out ways to support and engage with Fort Bragg. Staff currently host and participates in quarterly meetings with military host cities, NC Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, and the NC MECC. TFA 6.1.2 deals with the disparity study. Each of these tactics are green, one is at 100%, and the other two are at 25%. The disparity study was completed in the fourth quarter of FY22 and presented to council in quarter one of FY23. After the completion of the disparity study, staff is now reviewing the policy and procedures for contracting to determine if any revisions are needed. Also, the LSDB report is reported on a quarterly basis and will be ongoing. On Slide 53, moving into the second quarter of FY23, council staff continues to work on projects and tactics to meet our strategic goals. We will bring you the next quarterly update on the TFA action plans at the close of the second quarter, which will be January. Also, as a general reminder, the Strategic Planner Retreat will be held in November of 2022 this year. Tonight, council, we are asking that you accept the FY23 First Quarter Strategic Performance Report, and we thank you for your time and attention, and stand ready for answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. I do have a question. Now, Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to hold off. I do know we have a retreat coming up. 3.11, where you spoke on our infrastructure update. Now, if this is something that we'll be able to go into more detail on during the retreat, which I know we can, I'm just kind of speaking, I guess, for the audience and for our new members, that can be done there, right?
Yes, sir.
And the landscaping at our two entrances now that are coming up, Merkison Road and Bragg Boulevard, we will also be able to have detailed discussions on those items at the retreat also, correct?
Yes, sir.
Whenever we look at the funding, whenever we look at the funding for those, will we also have conversations or you have details on the part of the DOT funding that was given?
We're working on the agenda, so we're trying to get that finalized right now. We can look at the interest of council.
I would just like to know where we are with that funding and what's, how much is left?
Okay, we can definitely get your answer and get you that response this week.
Appreciate it, Mr. Lowry, Mr. Brayboy. Great presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of them. For, it's on, for TFA 2.4.1 on page 11, for the conceptual design of the maker space. I know that was for the, a conceptual design, but have we, have a date been set for the complete design?
As of right now, I don't think we have a definitive date. I can follow back up, this was about two weeks ago when we got this detailed, I can follow up for sure and get your definitive date, hardline date, if we have one in place, and I'll get that back to you this week also.
Okay. And two on page 19, for the development and implement council policies, for, do we have any data, any data or success rate for these incentive?
Right now, a lot of these are being stood up, currently in place, so we don't have a trend line data set that we can pull right now. As time goes on, we start seeing the success rates, or finding the success or failure rates on anything, we will be able to start looking at those numbers once we start having a trend line that we can establish there.
Okay. And also, you didn't cover, you guys didn't cover page 29 regarding the reduced litter and illegal dumping. How many, if you know, off the back of your hand, how many cameras do we, that's currently being utilized?
I do not want to say a number and be inaccurate. We know that we have tried multiple different systems. Some were not as good as others, and right now, the system, there's a definitive system that we're having in place now that is more effective, which we don't want to truly announce right now until we get a little more research under our belt with that system, but I could get it with you through email and send it directly to you, some of the information.
Okay, and are those able to move around throughout the city?
The new system would not be as maneuverable as taking a camera down or anything.
Okay. Last question for the, and if not, you can email me this information. On page 35, for the public land disposition, have we identified any areas?
So we're evaluating some of our city-owned properties that we currently have in place right now, and we're trying to use that to, hopefully use that to entice more business within those development areas. But beyond that, I don't think we have any other businesses or land use that we're looking at, it's just right now, it's just anything that's city-owned is what we're currently looking at.
Okay, it's not a specific area?
No.
Okay, one more, I know I said it was the last, Mayor. For on page 38, for the communities and school, I think the student support specialist, that was that Nick Gerald?
Yeah, Luther Nick Gerald.
Okay, Luther Nick Gerald, sorry. And that funding expired?
Ended at, in FY22.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And what is the position, like what's the job description of?
So that position was a student support specialist, so they would help to make sure that students were progressing along, okay, if there was any troubled issues that was going on, the support specialist was able to actually work with the student, to make sure that they were standing on track to stay in school, to be able to follow up with any assignments or details of that nature there.
Okay.
As far as a detailed explanation of that job description, I don't have right now.
Okay. Didn't that also like tie into homelessness somewhat, or, because that's what I, that's what I was under the impression, that that's not the same thing with the homeless liaison?
We can ask for the job description and send that. I also thought it was working as well with the parents, a good deal as well to, in addition to the kids, but we can get that and provide that to them.
Okay. Well, thank you, because I thought that was the motion some time ago, Councilmember at the time Wright, proposed funding, the deal. Okay, thank you. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Maynor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I briefly want to answer a question that was asked. So Councilmember Wright, former Councilmember Wright did request funding for, what is it, P for P, and our staff came back to us with recommendations to use the funding. The council supported funding a position within communities and schools, and that was, that was focused around poverty. But Councilmember Wright did ask that, but I did want to ask, well, I think this is more for the city manager, I did get some questions about this, this funding and the position. What would we need to do to refund? Because I do think communities and schools is doing good work within the school system, and I know this council has spoken about trying to support nonprofits in this, in this direction. So what, what will we need to do just so I can, you know, prepare however I need to prepare to make that ask? Not tonight, but I just want the answer. Thank you.
What I would suggest is that we reach out to P for P, and as you said, discuss with them the effectiveness of it, and, and whether this, the first iteration is the iteration they're on now about how they believe that the funding could be used. But the city, as you said, and as Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin said, the city did make a commitment to support this effort, but at the moment, allow us to reach out to them and see where they are, and we'll report back to you on that as well, and describe how you may wish to bring that up to the council, maybe even at your retreat.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Gentlemen, I did have one question, and you can send this to me. The software, the technology software that was mentioned for the help with the legal dump sites, I connected our IT with the T-Mobile a few months, probably a year ago. Not sure if that is one of the systems that you're saying you tried or you're considering. They had very good results in other communities, so you can send me a little bit more detail on, on the, or if you can point me to the link where we can find who it is that you're saying the city's currently trying to work with on that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hondros?
I move that we accept the First Quarter Strategic Performance Report.
Second?
All right, motion by Councilmember Hondros to accept the report, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion on the motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, those in favor of accepting the report. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, council.
All right. Item 9.0 is the public forum. This is a time where any- This is a time where any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than thirty minutes, and I see tonight we have around, uh, twelve speakers, so, uh, I know typically we try to give three minutes apiece, but just please, please be mindful that there are twelve speakers signed up in a thirty-minute slime, time slot. Um, each speaker will be limited to the three minutes or less to address city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals desiring to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on these items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, I ask that you please reserve those comments to speak under the public hearing. So, when your name is called by the city clerk, please come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record, then when you are notified, your time will begin, uh, when you have thirty seconds remaining, uh, the time clock will reflect that, and at the end of your given time, uh, you'll be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. That being said, madam clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Dr. Michael Ruff.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, I'm Michael Ruff. I live at three one nine Burnham Drive, and, uh, greetings, Mayor Colvin, other council members. The United States Army brought me to Fort Bragg in nineteen sixty-one, and those days, Yadkin Road had two lanes. Fayetteville has come a long way since then. In eighteen sixty-five, General Sherman and his army paid Fayetteville a visit when three thousand people lived here. His soldiers tore down every building of the arsenal, including the walls and the towers, and they left those six acres a very historic site, because there's nothing like it anywhere else in the state. In the one hundred and fifty-seven years since then, Fayetteville has come a very long ways. I believe the History Center would be a place that can bring us together, because the focus there is to be inclusive and not exclusive. Everyone gets a seat at the table, and no one is disrespected. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that the Airborne Special Ops Museum is one of the best things that's happened here at Fayetteville. It's first-class, and it attracts visitors from far and wide, who come here and spend millions of dollars that benefits our business community. The History Center will do the same thing. I'm not running for any public office, but I do ask you your vote, your vote to prime the pump, so we don't lose the sixty million dollar appropriation from the General Assembly. One day, there'll be five hundred thousand people living here in Fayetteville, and those two economic animals, the Airborne Museum and the History Center, will still be attracting visitors who spend millions of dollars that directly benefit our businessmen and businesswomen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please call your next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ms., um, Elaine Melino.
Good evening, Ms. Melino.
Uh, my name's Elaine Melino, and I live at two one one three Burnett Avenue. We have a real problem in our neighborhood with a home. It's, the address is five thirty-one Ivor Street, it's up at the corner where we live. We have been fighting for a year. I have called your office, I have begged people, we all have. There are rats, there is child abuse, and they're selling drugs twenty-four seven. The police are aware, I, I believe they're trying, but they're not trying hard enough, because we can't even walk our dog, okay? That's how bad it is. I'm scared to be in my home alone. I came here five years ago from New Jersey, we found a quiet little street to retire, nice little house, and this is just torturing us. They can't use their trash cans, they refuse, they just throw garbage. Now the city took their trash cans, well, that just makes it worse. I have continuously been calling your office, we go to meetings, um, we have little, you know, meetings in our area once a month. Ms. Ingram has seen this house, she knows, well, we've tried everything, and we just want it cleaned up, and we, there are three young children in that home with no shoes half the time, no coat in the winter, they're put outside to play in the filth, babies tossed in the back of the car, there's no car seat, they've had five cars in the past three months, and nobody has fifty friends a day that pull up, the man comes out, off they go, and this is twenty-four seven. Now, he is not registered in that home, it's the woman with her three children, but he is there day and night, and we're just, we're asking for some help to get rid of this. I, I don't know what more I can say other than, you know, Ms. Ingram knows, um, a lot of the police, you know, they, they sympathize, but we're not getting anywhere's, and the rats are disgusting, because there's garbage just everywhere's, and we don't want to live like this, you know? I pay my taxes, I moved to this nice little quiet street, and I don't want to be scared to walk my dog, that's how I feel. So, that's about it.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Hewitt, uh, can you have someone give a bit more detail on that situation?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, madam clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Billy Guitar. Mr. Billy Guitar. Mr. Michael Brown. Mr. Michael Brown. Mr. Chillicothe Hurst.
Good evening, Mayor, city council staff. My name is Chillicothe Hurst, reside at thirteen eighty-five McHenry Drive. I come before you, I believe it was in April, the last pre, city council meeting, I asked y'all to take the time out and just review the videotape of Mr. Jason Walker. Well, since then, we've had at least three more shootings of unarmed citizens in Fayetteville by law enforcement. It's remarkable when right here in North Carolina, we have a police chief, I believe in Wilmington, who fired three staff members for social media posts, but we can't get three, the three officers that was involved in the shooting of Ms. Jadas Johnson, the officer, Mr. Walker, what happened to Ms. Sutton at the detention center, and Mr. Justin over here at the trailer park. But we have those in authority positions throughout the state who ran on the program of addressing minority issues. As I look at the diversity of the city council, most of you ran on that platform, most of you ran on that. Mr. Hewitt, I'm glad you have your position, but you are the only one on the board who had the authority to remove the police chief. Friends is one thing, but you must have a moral compass, regardless of your position in government, you must have a moral compass. Mr. Dawkins, I don't know what you have on these people on city council, but your disrespect to my culture of women, I addressed it in April, and I'm still deadly serious with that. I don't know what you know, but you got a promotion when most corporate Fortune four five, five hundred companies in this country they call America, when you disrespect women of any culture, you get demoted, not promoted. I went to a community meeting over there on Bonanza Drive about the Piedmont Gas thing. No one say they, everyone in city government say they don't know how that occurred, well, since you don't know how that occurred, everyone who's been on the city council for the last year and a half, just like the Department of Justice is doing with the Trump administration, your phone records need to be seized, and I'm serious with this, because if anything happens, any leak happens over there, it's gonna fall upon those of government that I'm looking at right now. So, I'm gonna close with, those that are elected, regardless of your position, you're still supposed to have a moral compass, regardless of your position for these citizens. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Caitlin Potts.
Good evening, Ms. Potts.
My name's Caitlin Potts, I live on two nine four zero Bakers Mill Road, um, just stated was my address, which is in the neighborhood called Tarleton Plantation behind Bakers Mill Road, Summerlin Drive and Winton Drive, there's a natural gas pipeline less than two feet from the ground. The pipeline itself is about three feet in dynamic diameter coming, containing fourteen hundred pounds of pressure per square inch, compressed in less than one percent of its natural volume during transport. It has been there for about a decade, and it's considered a relatively old pipeline. Due to this, our neighbors can't even use fifteen feet of their backyard. Most of us are fine with this, and so am I, however, recently, the land where the natural gas pipeline resides is being used for recreational purposes. Specifically, there are a few families that come around a few times a week, riding motorbikes for hours on end most days of the week. I have a badge number, um, which is S four oh one, who said to my mom on the phone that public safety has no effect on the police department, that is a direct quote, and we were told it is the problem of the easement owner, and as landowners, we cannot issue a no trespassing, because Piedmont Natural Gas owns an easement, meaning that we are being denied our property rights. Fayetteville Police Department has asserted that the police and the PNG would need to be present at the same time for each trespass occurrence to stop individuals from riding motorbikes on the pipeline. My mom educated the police that it is not the weight, but rather the vibrations, at which point the police officer was sarcastic and stated that PNG drives their trucks over the easement, which is not true, they come out around twice a year to mow the easement. Vibrations from motor vehicles can cause erosion, which can ca, which can lead to a leak or an explosion. Piedmont Natural Gas does not care about the consequences either, when my mother called Piedmont Natural Gas, they claimed it is not their responsibility, instead, it is responsible of the Fayetteville Police Department that should enforce the two no trespassing signs on the land. This means that neither the Fayetteville PD nor the PNG are willing to act, instead of acting now to prevent a gas leak or an explosion, they can only do anything unless there is a gas leak present, which with the constant motorbikes being driven all over it on an already older pipeline can happen any day. Share preventative measures be taken, both FPD and PNG are aware of the danger, but refuse to take preventative action. We can't use most of our backyards and fenced in because it's too dangerous, we can't have fences on our land, but people can ride motorbikes as a logical fallacy, we have the lives of more than seventy-five households at risk. I'm asking city council to use any of their connections, because I know you have them, to act immediately for the safety of a large amount of District Six. I'm not an expert on natural gas pipelines in Cumberland County and surrounding areas, but this is a disaster waiting to happen, is not being taken seriously and entirely disappointing, and also has a fair chance of being in violation of the Natural Gas Pipeline Safety Act of nineteen sixty-six, which was passed by federal Congress stating that gas, gas pipelines shouldn't even be near any area where there are people present, such as community developments and households. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls. Our next speaker is Ms. Savona Akins. Ms. Savona Akins. Our next speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Ladies and gentlemen, in the, in the city hall, madam clerk, my name is Jose I. Cardona, I live at two thirty-three Addison Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I too came through the military, Mr. Mayor, when you was born, I was arriving in Fayetteville. Today, I come to you to tell you that the city, that the city of Fayetteville Forward Barn, that would be, well, we will put it up in the vote in November, you will receive three noes from me, and many like me, and June of this year, Mr. Herr, the budget for this city was passed by the city members without saying no. It passed, and the same issues that are on this, on this, uh, voting thing for over sixteen million dollars to be taken against the middle class, same reason for the budget came in at two hundred and forty-eight million dollars. The very next month, Cumberland County Commissioners gave themselves a hefty six percent increase in pay across the board. Again, no would be my vote, now that when the issue of changing the structure of the city council and denying, my vote would be no again. We don't need more council members, what we need, really need are council members that set priorities and accomplish them at one at a time. We need side, when we need a sidewalk, you build ASOM, Illegal Museum, which is no longer yours, it's solely beginning, uh, it's being funded by the United States Army. Why are we subsidizing this museum after twenty years? And it's because of the paper that I sent you, on top of that paper, you got the Cumberland County Commissioners, they giving a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars while taking away money from the council, from the Arts Council. When we needed sidewalks, I meant the health for many in this city, the council decided to put a parking deck, baseball stadium, festival park, and a PWC building in your downtown. What we needed sidewalks, you, you went to refer to the second floor of this building. As of this week, on your budget, you have some no, nonprofit group ready with a straw to suck all the money from the city, and to have them without no questions at all. You just poured more money into their accounts, when you need mon, when you needed money for sidewalks, you didn't audit all these nonprofit groups, they had millions of dollars special way in some other city other than Fayetteville. To the new council members, I urge you to follow others, don't follow others, be yourself and make the city great. I want to give you some sad news today. If you go to the Cumberland County School System, the website, on the, on the, um, bits, they got bits to tear down the schools, those little houses, white houses that are about eight hundred square feet that could handle your homeless eighty-nine, maybe a hundred, two hundred of them, they turned them down. Sad, thank you. If you want to see my tax also, I'd like to show you my tax, I'm getting banged with taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Gooden.
Our next speaker is Ms. Maya Warren. Ms. Maya Warren. Next speaker, Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray. Okay, our final speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Sean McMillan, sixty twenty-four Golden Rain Drive. Let's start tonight with a quote, uh, freedom is not a state, it is an act. It is not some enchanted garden perched high on a distant plateau where we finally sit down and rest. Freedom is the continuous action we all must take, and each generation must do its part to create an even more fair, more just society. And I say that to a, a council that I know has a lot of, lot on his plate, but I say that to a council which has failed in, in many ways over the last several years, uh, to pay attention to things that have been brought to your attention repeatedly. Uh, first thing I want to highlight is that the fact that we were here a month ago, a group of people talking about mental health response to mental health crisis. Uh, we said in a united voice with solidarity that the police should not be the only answer, it shouldn't be the only ones in our toolkit. Uh, we said with the united voice that we need solutions other than the police to respond to mental health crisis. We said to look to other models like Kahoots, like Hartz up in Durham, and we said we want that as a city. Uh, since then, I want to say we've heard some, some promising, uh, gestures, I've seen some promising gestures in the press. I've seen indication that this council is ready to move on creating an entity other than police to respond to mental health crisis, and that gives me some hope, but I, I'm not gonna rest a whole lot on that hope, because y'all know I've been in, in front of this council for years with several issues, and I've felt hopeful so many times and been disappointed so many times. So, I'm gonna repeat a call for policy, we don't care about your gestures at this point. If you had a bank of trust at some point with this community, it is, that account is depleted. We need to see action, we need to see policy change, we need to see you put your money to see action, we need to see policy change, we need to see you put your money where your mouth is, I appreciate the words of Mr. Cardona, we've seen you fund parties, we've seen you spend hours and hours on real estate tran- transactions in here, we've seen you even give yourself the moniker, the Can Do City, yet when it comes to things that are important to save lives, we've seen you repeat, repeatedly fail, and that's unacceptable, so I'm just urging you to not treat your positions as some kind of plateau where you can get, get to and feel comfortable and rest, but something where you challenge yourself to move for a policy that impacts lives, and the first policy that I think you should look at is that mental health crisis, uh, response, all right, other things I have to, have to mention, because they've been on your plate for a long time, independent oversight, think about it, this community had hope in twenty-twelve when Noble came, and some of you were on the council back then, right, they had hope, because we had outsiders coming in saying how messed up we were, and they have recommendations, one of which was to have a CRB, and we see that you've failed since twenty-twelve to put that on, on the, on the channel, I could go on for more than three minutes, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Please work for us.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have no further speakers.
All right, so with that, we will close the public forum, uh, council, motion to adjourn?
Mayor Colvin, I think we have one more item.
Yeah, administrative hearings, uh, was there a desire to, uh, shopping carts, Councilmember Mahandros, you had mentioned that, okay, motion?
Well, um, if, if I can get some clarity in that case, can we instruct the city staff to come back to us with that?
Yeah, I, I would be interested in, uh, in adding an upcoming work session.
Should we take any action now in order to make that happen?
I, I think it's just consensus to tell the manager to, uh, schedule that, all right, any, any council members object to the, that coming in an upcoming session?
Quick point of, um, personal inquiry, Mayor Colvin, in the past work session, you had directed staff, uh, to look into a crisis response team, can we get a quick update from the city manager about their progress on that?
Sure, Mr. Hewitt, can you address that?
I'll have to provide that to you in writing, I have not had a chance to check back in with the chief, I do know that we've provided, um, a presentation's been prepared, a budget worked up, and I think it was also, um, discussed at the last Citizens Police Advisory Board, which I was not in attendance, but we can get that to you guys tomorrow, all right?
All right, council, with that, motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.